The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council from May 22 to order. I'll note that this meeting has remote participation by members of the city council and city staff, as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, due to the declared local public health emergency. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll so that we may verify a quorum for the meeting.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Present.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Conno. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
Council President Bender.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum for today's meeting. We have the agenda before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a...
Madam President, there is one amendment that I put forward late last night. This is adding the new item of business number two, which would add the resolution which continues and extends the declared state of emergency and incorporates therein all of the declared emergency regulations issued by Mayor Frye. With apologies, I know that an emergency regulation was asked or issued yesterday, and this would incorporate that into the council's standing action.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on that amendment? I don't see any, so may I have a motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, on the motion to adopt the amended agenda, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries. And the agenda is adopted as amended. That brings us to the minutes for the May 15 meeting. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Next, we have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Hi.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those matters are referred. With that, we'll proceed to the order of new business, beginning with the mayor's weekly report on the state of our local public health emergency. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. It has been an exceptionally busy week around the state and as well as here at the city. The legislative session concluded with no resolution on several significant items. I know I and leaders from across this enterprise have been in very close conversation with legislators about both the bonding bill and the distribution of CARES Act funding. The governor, of course, issued guidance for bars, restaurants, salons, and other high-risk businesses, and our staff has been working around the clock to right-size those measures to account for the specific characteristics of our city. And after weeks of input and a ton of discussion with many of you, we've rolled out the state's first policy requiring the use of cloth masks covering a cloth mask covering in indoor spaces and businesses. I can't thank all of you enough for your partnership and input in shaping so many of these policies and helping us get the word out to our residents through the hashtag #MaskUpMPLS campaign. There's a lot to digest today, so I will dig right in. There have been 12 emergency regulations to date, the final, the 12th coming yesterday. As I just mentioned, over the course of the last month, we've looked at many other cities that implemented similar measures related to cloth masks: Denver, New York, Los Angeles, Nashville. Some were more restrictive, some less. We also consulted epidemiological experts in drafting the regulation. And ultimately, we came to the conclusion that any person who is medically able to wear the face covering above a certain age is required to wear one in indoor spaces of public accommodation. That means retail, hotels, government buildings, schools, universities, rec centers, service centers, and, once they're back online as well, bars and restaurants as well. Masks or cloth coverings can help with preventing your germs from infecting others, especially in situations where you may spread the virus without symptoms. And as we know, in many instances, it takes somewhere four to five to even like up to 10 days before people start showing signs or symptoms of COVID-19. And in some cases, they don't ever show symptoms, but they nonetheless are walking around carrying the virus. As it relates to enforcement, we're not criminalizing forgetfulness. We are not penalizing people for a lack of awareness. We are, however, approaching the implementation of this policy with grace and patience. What we are doing is prioritizing outreach and education. But here's what we will be cracking down on. We will not be entertaining extreme selfishness and flagrant disregard for the health and safety of fellow Minneapolis residents. That type of behavior is going to be unacceptable. We will be helping people comply as well. And to support the effort, our fire department, OEM, and health are launching a mask drive on Memorial Day from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and people will be encouraged to donate cloth masks at fire stations around the city. And the regulation itself will go into effect on Tuesday, May 26, so we'll have a runway before people need to start complying. As per the regulation, of course, we encourage people to comply right now. And then there will be several more days until the June 1 date. Moving on to health items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Vice President Jenkins has a question or comment.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mayor Frye. And I do support the Mask Up effort and the emergency regulation. I'm just curious, how do you see masks working in bars and restaurants?
Madam President, Madam Vice President, with difficulty is the truth. Obviously, you can't wear a mask while you are eating or drinking. That would be prohibitive. However, we want to make clear that, one, of course, staff, cooks, anybody busting tables, whatever, should be wearing the mask. And we want to protect staff as much as possible from the customers that are going to these restaurants. And so, as of right now, as you know, the governor's order only allows for patio or outdoor space to be provided for restaurants and bars. And this particular regulation would not impact outdoor activities. It's exclusive to public indoor spaces of accommodation. However, undoubtedly, we will have to be issuing some additional guidelines and recommendations when restaurants indoors open up, if the regulation is still in effect at that point.
And then, just to follow up, are there any thoughts or actions being taken to help provide masks for those who may not have access to them?
Madam President, Council Vice President, yes, we will be having a mask drive, as I mentioned. It'll be on... The regulation will go into effect on May 26. However, on Memorial Day, we're doing a big mask drive in conjunction with our health department, fire department, OEM, and people will be able to drop off masks at fire stations around the city. And so additionally, we will be making accessible masks to the extent that we can to people around our city that, for some reason, can't get one themselves. I will note, however, that this regulation does not require a commercially-made or professionally-developed mask. You know, the mask that I wore this morning on my run was very shoddily made by myself, just with like a ripped t-shirt and wrap it around your face and make sure that you've got some form of cloth covering both your mouth and nose.
Thank you, Mayor Frye.
Thank you both. And you know, I'll just lift up, I think, what you said, Mr. Mayor, about our firm commitment to protecting those employees who are increasingly, in larger quantities, being considered essential workers in our workplaces. And I think we're seeing around the country different approaches as cities pass workers bills of rights to protect essential workers as that discussion is happening at the federal level. So I think this small change is, while not small in terms of, you know, people getting used to the practice and all of that, really important for our workforce to maintain protection as the economy starts to change and have more places open and more places of work open, giving workers less choice and less agency in some circumstances. So we just really want to make sure that folks stay safe. Of course, the general public and anyone else who might be choosing to go out, but also especially those workers who are there. Councilmember Fletcher has a question.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor, for this order. I think it's giving a lot of people a lot of comfort. And I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback about it from Minneapolis residents, so really appreciate that. I think it's important to take this seriously. One of the things you and I have talked about and that we actually worked together to find money and as a council and with your mayor's office is the need to not just do a mask drive. We do need donations, and we need to do whatever we can with people making their own. But we do actually need to procure more masks for people and especially to get masks into the hands of people who might find it prohibitive to buy supplies or to order masks while money is very scarce. And so I am happy that we have worked together to get some distribution happening. I know that there is significantly more need. And I'll just note that I have been in some conversations with public health where they have been working on identifying funding sources. And it just feels like a little bit more explicit guidance from you to help them feel confident pulling the trigger on actually ordering the masks and know that your executive procurement authority is going to be used for that purpose might speed this along and get masks into people's hands a little quicker. So I would just ask you to, if you can today, make sure you're talking to public health and just, you know, really helping them feel confident that this is a priority of the city, that this is something that we're going to cover one way or the other, but we have to get masks into people's hands, especially in dense, low-income apartment buildings.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam President, I hear you entirely. We do have a mask supply, obviously, right now in the cash. The question is then how far that mask supply goes. And so, as you know, Hennepin County has taken the measure of ensuring that all Hennepin County employees, as well as individuals entering the Hennepin County building, have access to a mask in some form. You know, I think that's something that we want to look at as well. Obviously, we need to have a priority, making sure that our first responders are properly outfitted. And as of right now, they most definitely are. And additionally, coming to the council soon, there should be some CDBG funding, about $115,000, which would be for masks. And we should be able to talk to staff about that sometime in the very near future. So thank you.
Thank you both. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping that you could speak a little bit more to the enforcement, I suppose. You spoke just very briefly to this. One of the things that I've heard from my community is that folks are grateful and excited that you acted very quickly on this. The $1,000 fine really is making folks concerned because being able to access this. I know we're doing the drive, but you know, even during the shelter-in-place orders, while those were happening, you know, we were having a lot of issues with folks wearing masks and social distancing and things like that. And so I'm just curious as to what is the plan to be able to get the masks to folks who need them the most? And how are we making sure that we are not criminalizing and financially burdening folks who do not have access to masks or are not aware of how serious and how much of a risk this is? So I was just hoping to be able to get a little bit more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Cunningham. We... So enforcement will be escalating... Enforcement will be done in an escalating fashion. Of course, we begin with outreach and engagement. You know, this is not a measure meant to criminalize forgetfulness. This is not a measure meant to penalize someone who just did not know that this regulation is in place. However, we will be cracking down on extreme selfishness. In other words, you're going to have to earn that citation. If you are totally overtly ignoring this rule, which we have in place, you've been told about it, then yes, you know, we will be cracking down. And the enforcement will come from a department, depending on where the violation and how the violation took place. In other words, you know, there will be certain violations that health may account for in food, pools, or lodging. There will be others involving business licensing, for instance, that CPED may take care of. And yes, there will be instances where Minneapolis Police Department could also get involved. The $1,000 fine, by the way, it's not a $1,000 fine, it's up to a $1,000 fine. That is very much not the first resort. That is the last one. And as far as distribution of masks, yes, you know, as I mentioned, we've got the mask drive that we are pushing out. I know that our health department has been able to get masks to a lot of our more community-based health systems and programs. We have seen masks distributed through MPHA. And yes, I agree, we would like to get these masks distributed more broadly to some of these lower-income buildings that could have a higher susceptibility and, given the density of people, a likely higher transmission rate. We're working on that right now. I just want to reiterate, I know I've said this before, I'm not reiterating this for you, but more, you know, the public. Even if you don't have a professionally-made mask, you can still use a form of cloth and then wrap it around your face as long as it's covering your nose and your mouth. That should work.
Great. Thank you. I do appreciate that clarification. You know, the, you know, kind of what I'm thinking is, you know, who is engaging folks who are, you know, congregating or walking along Lowry or Broadway? And, you know, the... As, you know, obviously, MPD plays a role in that in enforcement. But I'm also curious about like, who are, like, are we engaging with neighborhood associations? For example, my ward has very active neighborhood associations who are doing a ton of work around COVID response and engaging with folks in a healthy way to be able to educate folks. So, you know, I don't have a lot of multifamily housing units, for example, in buildings in my ward. We have low-density, like, Section 8 scattered housing, for example. But so I just want to really reiterate, or not reiterate, but really emphasize that neighborhood associations, I think, would be a really great connection as that point of contact. And then my last question is, so you said it's escalating. So, for example, if someone is walking along Lowry and, let's say, you know, MPD stops and is like, hey, you've got to be wearing a mask, like, is that going to be documented? And that's how we know it's escalating? Or is it specifically going, like, do you mean it will be escalating for like businesses that are not adhering to the regulation?
Madam President, Councilmember Cunningham, regarding your scenario on Lowry, there wouldn't be enforcement at all in the first place because it takes place outside. This regulation only applies to public indoor places of accommodation. However, to the extent you're asking what would be the scenario if someone is walking in a place of public accommodation that is indoors, we would... Well, first, the business is not required to enforce. The business is required to make sure that their own employees are wearing a mask. Businesses are certainly allowed to tell someone, a customer or otherwise, that is not wearing a mask, that they are not welcome in their shop without a mask. But we are not requiring businesses to do the enforcement work of the regulation provided by the city. So in instances where a worker is experiencing a problematic patron that won't wear a mask, we are encouraging the worker, we are encouraging the business owner, we are encouraging other customers to call 311 to let us know. And then we can take on that burden of enforcement. We have learned from other cities that have put that burden on businesses, and the result has been bad.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification. I did mean like as an individual that's walking along Lowry, like going in and out in Broadway, going in and out of the businesses. So thank you for that clarification. I do appreciate it. And thank you for the information. I will be sure to pass that along to my constituents.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Mayor, as you're talking, and before we leave this section on health, it's occurring to me that I think it might be helpful to have an update at our next POGO committee meeting about some of these topics around testing, you know, quarantine housing, some things that I know you and I have been briefed on a bit here and there, but maybe more for the public. Because I think you and I mentioned it in various ways more in passing during these presentations, but I think for the council members and the public, it might be helpful to have a little more detail about, you know, how we're tracking cases in the city, you know, what populations are most impacted. We've had some discussion about that at a high level here. You know, what's the status of the statewide efforts on tracing versus what's happening at the city or county level? You know, what kind of, once we notice a prevalence of cases in a particular geographic area or in a particular population, what are the next steps happening? And again, what's the breakdown between city, county, and state responsibilities there? So, you know, I think I'll just pause and leave that as an idea maybe for next week's POGO meeting.
Madam President, I agree. That would make a lot of sense.
Great. Does anyone, any councilors have any other questions or comments on this section around health or the regulations? I don't see any, so we can go ahead to the next section. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Next is the health report by the numbers. The, for statewide statistics, total approximate number of completed tests right now are 173,556. That's 45,000 more than last week, as you can see. These numbers of daily and weekly tests are quickly rising. There have been 18,200 positive cases in Minnesota. That's up 4,000 from last week. Number of patients who no longer need to be isolated hovers at 12,488. Tragically, there have been 809 deaths in the state of Minnesota. Deaths among long-term care and assisted living facilities account for 663 of the 809. So still the vast majority. I'm going to skip down to cases for healthcare workers here. There are 2,120 cases for healthcare workers. That's up 500 from last week. Total cases requiring hospitalization is 2,380, up 400 from last week. There's 566 hospitalized as of today and 229 as of today in intensive care units. Minneapolis case information, the total positive cases are 2,176. That's up 500 from last week. Total hospitalized is 388. Total recovered is 391. And the total number of deceased is 106. There's some Minneapolis demographic information there that you can take a look at. Any questions before I move on to testing?
Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to note in the Minneapolis numbers, NCR hosted a call focused on receiving feedback from the East African community this week. And on that call, we discussed 97 positive cases in the Cedar Riverside area immediately around the Public Housing Tower. And I just wanted to see what we can do or what we are doing, because I know there is a lot of conversation happening around getting more active testing protocols and potentially isolation housing if we identify a lot more cases. So I know we're talking about for the next POGO on June 4, getting more of an update on the comprehensive program around that. But I wonder, specifically, you can talk about sort of where we're at or what we need and what we're trying to make happen in Cedar Riverside.
Madam President, Councilmember Fletcher, thank you for the call on this particular topic yesterday. You're right, that is the approximate number of cases in the Cedar Riverside area generally as a neighborhood. There are obviously far fewer cases in the Cedar Riverside Plaza itself. However, you know, while we do have some testing capacity in the vicinity, in the area, we do not yet have a testing site located in Cedar Riverside Plaza itself. And, you know, we discussed talking with the ownership from the plaza, who is very much in favor of it, and working with the state to facilitate something like that. And I've already been looking into it, and we've been actually working on it for, as many of you have, for weeks now, and will continue to do so. There are several logistics we're trying to work through with the state.
Thank you both. And I certainly didn't intend to cut off any other questions or comments about this topic for today's meeting, when suggesting we have it at POGO, which, thanks to the clerk, reminded me, is in a week from Wednesday, June 4. Looks like Council Vice President has a question as well.
Oh, no, Madam President. I mean, I guess it was just for the chat, but is the University of Minnesota testing?
Madam President, Council, Madam Vice President. the University of Minnesota has this, has a program in conjunction with the Mayo Clinic and the Governor's Office that, where they are dramatically increasing the number of tests. And so, yes, that is happening right now. I think the question is to, is to whether we can, in addition to obvious tests that are happening at major healthcare sites and hospitals, whether we could have these satellite locations for testing around the city, especially in areas where hotspots could pop up.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I wonder, Mr. Mayor, is, is the Health Department on the call? And I wonder if they would want to chime in just briefly on, on this, some of these questions around testing and both availability and protocols. Hi, Commissioner.
Good morning. Yes, I think the, the mayor covered the landscape pretty well. We have been working with both M Health Fairview, which is a university-based people center, community, Cook Clinic, which is also university affiliated, as well as Henepin Health, to look at how do we get some of these place-based testing efforts up and running? And our medical advisor to the city, Dr. Hick, has really described for us, some of the challenges have to do with how information usually flows from testing to people. And it's usually through a medical record here in Minnesota. And so, there may be some need to look at and modify some of the, the state regulations to make it a little bit easier for us to get these things going more quickly. So, that really has been kind of a, a speed bump in our process, but there are lots of people that are interested in doing it. And we believe that we will have a place-based testing, in addition to the ongoing testing that the People Center is doing before the end of next week. So, in the, in the Cedar Riverside area. And then we are also looking at other, other testing in public housing highrises and amongst the homeless populations. And we hope, again, to get more traction and have some tangible plans and results in the very near future.
Ms. Musica, could you help us understand what happens next after a testing protocol reveals a number of cases in one place or for individuals? What could be expected as next steps?
Yes, Madam Chair. What happens is something called contact tracing. And up until a few weeks ago, that was done exclusively by the state. We in Minneapolis have begun to train a, a team and so are doing much of the contact tracing ourselves in, in collaboration with the state now. And so, the person who has tested positive is contacted by a contact tracer, who then explores with that person who they might have been in contact with, and then explains to them that as someone who is COVID positive, that they need to isolate themselves so that they don't infect other people. And those people who they have been with during the time when they had COVID-19 or a couple of days before they were symptomatic are also contacted, asked to quarantine, so stay away from others for a defined period of time. What the contact tracers do is they help people think about how is that going to be accomplished in the situation in which they live? So, for people who are homeless, unsheltered homeless, or in shelters, the county has provided alternative housing. For the rest of us in the city, we really just need to problem solve with what we've got to work with. And so, we inquire about how many bathrooms? Is it possible to segregate the bathroom use? Or is it, there are protocols to use if bathrooms need to be shared so that people are not infecting each other by using the same space? How within a living arrangement are we going to set aside a person who's infected from the others? So, it's really a whole rubric of decision-making, kind of a decision-making tree in which we consult with the family. There are also essential services that people need when we ask them to stay home, to quarantine or isolate. And so, we are working with the county. We have a contract with them to provide some of those supports so that people can accomplish what we're asking them to do.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions on this topic? I don't see any, so thank you very much. And again, I think, given the interest in this, likely makes sense to schedule some time on that June 4th meeting to offer any updates then and take questions as well. Thank you, Kuscher.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're all set on this item.
Thank you. I will skip the testing section of the Health Department, given that Commissioner Musica can't just cover most of it and go on to PPE. PPE supplies, including 9,100 cloth masks, are currently being purchased with both council and mayoral funds, 63,000 allocated at the end of April, and are now into the, our possession. 2,900 masks were in stock at central stores, which were immediately allocated to MPHA for distribution at the high-risk, high-rise buildings, as I mentioned earlier. MPHA is reporting the equal numbers of masks went to all of their buildings and were able to serve half of those total residents. We are proactively doing outreach to some of the other lower-income serving organizations, serving organizations and housing locations, including Aon, PPL, YouthLink, Catholic Charities, Cedar Riverside Area, Little Earth, and other subsidized housing sites as well. On coordination efforts, business licensing and licensing in the Health Department's food, lodging, and pool staff are working quickly to help malls integrate safe retail practices in anticipation of high foot traffic around aid. The Health Department is playing the lead public health role, convening state and county public entities and social service agencies to report activities, identify unmet needs, and coordinate responses. And they're also working with clinics and health systems to organize COVID testing, as I said earlier, in the Cedar Riverside area and with other communities. OEM, the city's workforce continues to maintain normal workforce strength and essential functions of, of government. Daily rate of workers on duty is, is const- is very consistently between 89% and 91% of the total workforce. Approximately 79% of workers on duty are working remotely, and that excludes both police and fire. OEM's efforts remain focused on the awareness of trends, impacts, and the health of our residents' employees through the community strategy. Procurement. As of May 20th, there has been 4,924,291 spent in procurement. The total procurement amount increased by 145,370 with two main contracts, Microsoft licenses, which were 69,670, which is IT, and animal shelter boarding, which is 60,000. And I want to be really, really clear. This procurement that I just mentioned, this is not the total spend related to COVID. The, the total spend is in the tens of millions and upwards of like 65 million. This 4 million is simply on the procurement side. Very important distinction. Budget. As I mentioned last week, we're in the midst of developing an amended 2020 budget. I'll present that budget to council on June 12th. And leading up, there are a number of meetings scheduled to ensure that council member input is, is received. This week, staff from my office and the Budget Office started preliminary meetings with council members to discuss estimated costs related to COVID-19, city revenue loss projections, furlough summary, and layoff summary. And next week, Heidi from my office will gather your questions and requests, and those are due to her by Wednesday, May 27th. Then the week of June 1st through 9th, our office will work with finance staff and department heads to send responsive information to council members by Tuesday, June 2nd. If there are additional requests or feedback, questions after that, we ask that you, you send them over to Heidi by Thursday, June 4th. We want to get you every bit of the information. We're just trying to create a, a plan of making it happen, given that there's a whole lot that everybody, staff, mayor's office, council members, everybody's trying to bring together to rally, to, to meet this, these deadlines as quickly as possible. And then we'll return that, those responsive materials to council members on Monday, June 8th, and ask the council members to provide any final input to the staff by Tuesday, June 9th. And I, I know this is a tight timeline. We're all operating on a very tight timeline, but we do need to act swiftly, and I very much appreciate your partnership. Public safety.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment on that. And also see if councilors have anything else to ask. I think I really appreciate your office and, and Ms. Ritchie for putting the time in like this to help coordinate. I know often council members are asking questions directly of department staff. And, you know, of course, that, that may still happen on some circumstances, but often, you know, department heads or key division directors or finance staff within departments get a lot of questions, often the same ones from multiple council members. And so, as our staff work so hard to prepare the budgets for their departments and to work with your office, I think this layer will help us both have that transparency and accessibility for the council offices, but also help everyone manage their time and make sure that our staff have the adequate time that they will need to, you know, do all the preparations for their own budgets. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I do want to raise a concern that this, I, I appreciate the thought that's gone into this, Mayor. I really think that it's, it's a very ambitious timeline. And the, the main concern is if there's a hiccup anywhere along the way, it, it's going to be very, very difficult. I think you've stated really well how high the risks are. And I just kind of want to warn that this is a little overly complex. If the issue is staff time and making sure our valuable staff are focusing on the budget, I think there's another way we could work on that problem. When you talk about all the materials and things we're going to be needing, we're going to need data at a deeper level and much quicker than we've ever had to do it before. So, I think some of my, one of my suggestions I've made before is instead of just having to go through this, this process, whatever is going to be sent to your office and to the, the council president, just go to council, all council members. You know, if they, we, if we can all see the same data at the same time, we'll be able to keep moving on it. I think this, again, I think with the, the timeline, if something goes wrong in the process, we'll know when it's too late. Whereas if we're able to make sure that everyone has all the same data, we can make that decision and be responsible to our constituents.
Madam President, Councilmember Schrader, this is not an issue of preventing the disclosure of data. We will get you the data. It's about making sure that we're able to get you the data in an organized fashion and then answer questions in an organized fashion. And as you can probably imagine, answering questions from 14 different elected officials in a very tight timeline while simultaneously writing a budget, amending a budget, and figuring out very difficult cuts at the same time is not just difficult, it, it will be near impossible. And so, I want to be very, very frank upfront with how we need to conduct this. And we will get you the information. We will answer your questions. We're just trying to do so with, in an organized fashion. And, you know, I'll note, the state is going through something similar right now. They don't have every single legislature, legislator that gets every bit of information as soon as it comes in. They have representatives, just like we have. We have three representatives that will be in many of these meetings. We will all, four of us, disseminate this information as much as possible and as quickly as possible. But it helps if we're able to do it through some form of structure. Without the structure, we will definitely run into roadblocks and miss deadlines.
Thank you for that, Mayor. I, I think that's, that is certainly one approach. Another approach is just to increase the transparency. If we are going to, if you're worried about multiple questions from elected leaders, if I see, just like when I'm talking now, and a council member hears one of their points said, they just don't bring that question up. If someone else is asking a question I have, I'm not going to ask it. In fact, you could just actually give the answer you were going to give to one of my colleagues to me, and that would be fine. I think the, your point about the state, I, I have the same frustrations. When I worked as an advocate, it is so frustrating and it is very hard on democracy when everything is behind closed doors and it's a few number of people. People's voices aren't heard. If you are not in leadership, then you are cut out those last days at the state Capitol. I certainly don't want that to happen here on the city level.
Madam President, Councilmember Schrader, I reject the notion that everything is happening behind closed doors. I've been very clear to the council. I've been clear to the Stark Tribune about some of these budget shortfalls. I've talked them, about them in policy group meetings. I've talked to them about in a weekly report to staff. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think it is part of our obligation collectively to be disseminating information, and my obligation to be disseminating information to you and the council as readily and as quickly as possible. However, it's, it's not my responsibility to pretend that my hand is an airplane and spoon-feeded to you. That responsibility won't come up until probably four or five months from now, when I'm a father. And actually, it'll probably be like five or six months after that, at which point the baby will no longer be nursing. So, you know, we're all on board. We're all on board to provide the information. This is going to be a difficult process. We're going to get through together, though.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, it, it's something that, it, when things are, when you're saying they're not behind closed doors, we're not getting the same information. We're having, going to get something that, we are going to get that information a day later, two days later, hours later. All of that matters for every council member and their office to take a look at. With all due respect, what is going to be different than what a department head who is, you know, concerned about their budget, concerned about their hard-working staff? They're going to give you the best they can. I don't see what's going to happen when it goes through this process and comes out at the end, other end. I don't want to have that it on letterhead and that to take hours. If we can have access to that material at that same time, I, I really don't see a problem. And I think that's going to be a question we're going to get from our constituents as well.
Madam President, Councilmember, we will get you the information as soon as we possibly can, noting that information needs to be made in real time often.
Thank you.
Thank you both here. And, you know, and the mayor and I have talked about this as well. You know, I think part, part of maybe what Councilmember Schrader is voicing is a desire for staff to be able to respond to council members using their own good judgment about their own capacity and time. And so, I think if I can summarize what I'm hearing from Councilmember Schrader is that, you know, we'll have this official process, and then almost certainly questions will come up that, you know, may not be so formal, or maybe clarifying questions, or maybe something that wasn't anticipated. And, and so, I think I'm hearing a request that if possible, staff are available for answering those kinds of quick questions, whether it's finance staff or mayor's office staff. You know, I think sometimes we are often looking at budget change items. Many of you have mentioned this in the past, including you, Mr. Mayor. And so, when we start to try to dive into our existing budget in the way that we will likely have to with these cuts, it's maybe sometimes a little harder to get information about why are things the way they are and how, how is this structured and could we think about it differently? So, I don't know, Councilmember Schrader, if you want to comment further, but that's, that's what I'm hearing from the council member is that there'll be likely questions or scenarios like that that would come up, you know, outside of these particular dates that have been set up. So, I think if, my perspective is that if we can handle the anticipated questions that many people have, you know, within this structure, that will help us clear up time for those deeper questions that any of us might have, or for those last-minute questions that might come up. So, I, I see Councilmember Schrader does want to follow up, and Mr. Mayor, you may want to comment as well. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Council President. That's a, it's an important distinction, and I want to be very clear. I, I feel like there's going to be kind of two, two phases of this. There's the first initial phase where all of the data from our departments and from others, and the council member questions are all kind of hit in that first wave. What I'm talking about there is just, just getting that information, not, not having it go through multiple people when the department's heads are sending it. They just copy council members on that. Now, I'm not asking, you know, to your analogy, Mr. Mayor, to have it spoon-fed or digested. I'm, I'm actually saying I would like to do that work. I'd like to see what that data is, to see what the department heads are saying, and to be able to have all that information before going into the budget. And having that as early as possible is, is going to be critical. On the second part, no, I, I think it's, and maybe that's part of some of the dislike, misunderstanding here. I, I would say I, I'm very protective of staff time. I, I think we need to be using them for what they're in those jobs for, for their expertise, for their experience. And the last thing we need is to have multiple questions. And I completely agree, we need to make sure that we're not asking the same questions. And I completely agree, we need to make sure that we're not asking the same questions. Frankly, I think what's going to be most helpful for me is, you know, seeing what my colleagues ask, to see what their experience leads them when, to, to ask and what their constituents and their view of what's going to make this city great, what questions they're going to have for the budget as well.
Madam President, Councilmember Schrader, thank you for the input. Yes, we will get you the information as soon as possible, and I'll note that that was part of the reason for scheduling these council meetings. I have not been, these council, these meetings with individual council members regarding any of the budgetary shortfalls. I have not been briefed at this point beyond that. You know, I will have to make decisions. We will have the group, and I mentioned, the council president, council vice president, and council member Pomisano will be in. And like I said, we will get you all the information as soon as we possibly can. Sometimes there is a gap.
Okay, thank you. And I do, you know, I did also have a conversation with Mr. Ruff. And I would actually welcome folks' feedback about how these initial round of briefings have gone this week. So one option would be for us to maintain a schedule of weekly briefings with council members. Again, in those, the information that was shared with council members was all similar or equal to what we had been briefed on publicly, but it gave council members a chance to ask some more of those in-depth questions. So that's something that we could maintain throughout this next month as we delve into the budget changes. I do see Councilmember Cunningham also in queue. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we are speaking right now of the amending the 2020 budget. I am curious if you could please explain further, just, you know, for public transparency, how does this impact the process for the 2021 budget? Because typically, by now, we would have already been having budget meetings where departments were, you know, are presenting. And so I'm just curious as to what, what does the 2021 budget timeline and process look like within this, within our current reality?
Madam President, Councilmember Cunningham, thank you for the question. I want to touch on one item, quick, Councilmember Cunningham, before I get to that, which is that we are going through this process, to be very clear, to get input from council members. That is the process of going, the point of going through this. I did not want to have all of the work that we collectively did to arrive at the 2020 budget to be forenot and to have all of the input and moves that you made to then be unilaterally changed. We still do have a process where the mayor proposes a budget, of course, with input, but the mayor proposes a budget, and then the council can amend and adopt. We're not moving away from that process for purposes of 2020. It's still, it still is my ability to have that budget, to make changes that are necessary, to work with the council representatives on that body, and then ultimately to present. I want to be clear, we, there is a reason for that process because it allows for efficiency, especially in tight times. With regard to the 2021 budget, a lot of this work will be happening almost simultaneously. To Councilmember Cunningham's questions, the work of the 2020 budget will not directly impact the work for the 2021, but you are right, Councilmember, there is perhaps an indirect impact due to financial constraints. As far as the process goes, we will present the amended 2020 budget on June 12th. The council will then have, I don't remember the exact date, but a matter of a couple of weeks to then review, markup, and adopt that budget. And then almost immediately thereafter, we will commence work in getting the 2021 budget set for presentation at the normal time period, which will likely be in August. So that's how the process will work. This is going to be a big lift for council members, for mayor's office, for staff. And so, you know, this is really important that we work together on this one because I cannot emphasize enough how much work will go into understanding what the data points say, understanding our financial constraints, and then making changes based on what we've learned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I see Councilmember Goodman in queue and also Councilmember Pomisano. Councilmember Pomisano, do you want to chime in about any of those budget process questions?
I don't know that it's real productive here, you know. In general, staff really need to focus on providing support to our budget office right now and then to our mayor to prepare a budget. And there's not enough bandwidth to respond to 14 policymakers during that time, but that's not to say that we can't have a greater level of information. This is an amendment to an existing budget. So we have hundreds of pages of that budget online, as does the public. So it's not like we're going through, it seems like a condensed process, but please understand, we are not going through a full entire budget cycle here in the month of June. This is really just changes to what is already published and online. What I wanted to say specific to Councilmember Cunningham's question is about, there will be a continuum, right? We all know that we are looking at dramatic cuts. I said, so in our public meeting on Wednesday, $165 million less revenue for this year, which we're going to need to make up in the second half of this year, plus estimated COVID-related costs of $66 million that we see that won't necessarily need to be paid out this year, but will fall into 2021, perhaps beyond. But some of the strategies that we've already talked through with colleagues, that staff have talked through with colleagues, include things like, you know, it might come to the need to do incentivized retirements. And that's not actually an effective strategy to make budgetary cuts that will work for the rest of this year, but it's absolutely a strategy that we need to look at for the 2021 budget. And that's one small example, but that is something, that's the kind of thing that will bleed over into the 2021 budget from this kind of look, very serious look at making serious cuts within our city enterprise. So I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel a tremendous amount of emotion and stress surrounding the current situation. And what I hear from my colleagues today is the manifestation of that level of stress combined with emotion. So I think I just felt like I needed to say that I understand where all of you are coming from, because I'm coming from that same place, too. But what gives me faith and hope is that we've picked leaders in Council President Bender and Vice President Jenkins, as well as the mayor, who many of us have worked with in the past, to try to lead us through this process. And it's time for the rest of us to let them lead and to ask them to give us some direction as we face a difference between where our heads are at and where our hearts are at. It's going to be a very horribly difficult process to go through reducing this kind of funding from the city's budget. It will be choices between bad and tragic. And our staff are working, what was 10-hour days, now 12-hour days. I have gotten emails from staff at 2:00 in the morning stressed about how restaurants are going to move forward. I've received emails at midnight from staff worried about the level of unemployment in our city and who those people are who are unemployed. Our people are working twice as hard as many in the community to try to address the needs of so many people who are hurting right now. So I would just encourage us to remember that we picked our leadership. We asked them to lead us. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't provide feedback, attend meetings prepared and ready to go, to ask questions, but we should do that, recognizing that a handful of people have stepped, stepped up to be in charge. I'm not one of them. And I think that we should give them an opportunity to try to lead us in a direction where we can have a unified approach and that we can have collaboration about these reductions because they're all going to be terribly painful and hurtful to people. And this is coming at a time at which many of us, myself included, as you can hear from me, are very worried about what's happening in our community, people right now. And so all of us arguing over when we get information doesn't do anything to forward the positive and, and hardworking direction that we need to be moving in right now together. I feel a lot of love and respect from so many of you. I'm working with Councilmember Schrader very directly. It's been wonderful. Same with Councilmember Fletcher. So I do think an emergency brings people together. And I want to remind us that this emergency is one at which we need to lead, but we also have to agree to be led. And so please, you know, thank a staff person today for the work that they're doing. And let's remember that we're in this together and trying to come collectively to making this decision is going to make it a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I see Councilmember Schrader in queue.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Like, I will be very, very brief, and just know that, you know, my intention for getting that information is making sure we all can come together in that unity and let you talk about, because I think that this, I completely agree, that now is an opportunity for all of us to come together. I just want to make sure we're all on the, have the same footing so we can do the best job we can for our constituents, for the city workers, for all the people that depend on us.
Thank you all so much. And I, you know, I, I think it's important that folks are asking questions, and I understand where they're coming from. You know, in these times where we're making cuts, you know, I think it asks, it raises a lot of questions about where are our priorities and what is an essential city service? And some of the old assumptions about those questions may be very different now. And I think we see this playing out right now at the county as they're debating, you know, potential closures of buildings, and many of which are in communities of color in Minneapolis. And the leadership that we have from the county commissioners that are now representing the city of Minneapolis, you know, raising important questions about, about some of those values in their, in their budget. So those are the kinds of things that I know are on council members' minds when they're asking questions. And, you know, I accept them with, with openness to that and to understanding that it's coming from a place of really wanting to make sure that this, this quickly done process reflects the values and the changes that we are trying to bring to our city and how we approach difficult decisions and crisis and maintaining that center of race equity in that work. So I appreciate all of the perspectives, and thank you very much. Anything else on this? I don't see any, so, Mr. Mayor, I think we're set to go. I might need to ask folks to muture lines if you are not speaking. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to all of the council members for your input here. I do appreciate it. These will be difficult times. And I understand that your willingness to provide input, to get all of the information as soon as possible is, is really a true heartfelt desire to do right by your constituents in the city, and I feel the exact same way. We'll move on to public safety now with MPD trends. Property crimes are still up this week at about 14%, as our auto thefts, thefts up 48.6%. I've described in previous council meetings some of the reasonings. And once again, a gentle reminder to not leave your vehicle running unattended even for a minute. Gun crime, there were 15 gun recoveries this week citywide. And year-to-date, 412 guns have been recovered. In response to the eight gunshot wound victims, which happened this week alone, the city's Community Trauma Response Work Group, led by Office of Violence Prevention Director Sasha Cotton, Councilmember Cunningham, and Jen White from my office, held an emergency meeting to implement elements of this response plan. In addition, next step, hospital-based intervention has been in contact with many of the victims, excuse me, to provide services. Next on enforcement of the governor's stay-at-home order, there remains no citations or arrests to date by Minneapolis Police Department. With the governor's stay-at-home order ending on May 18th, traffic control modified their outreach and will drive with lights around the perimeter of park areas to provide a passive presence. Information and updates will continue to be shared with the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. Fire departments' run volume remains consistent with a slight uptick related to the relaxation of the stay-at-home order and more people enjoying the warmer weather and outdoor activities. The department continues its ongoing efforts around community outreach and education. As I mentioned earlier, the fire department is collaborating with OEM for the distribution of collection containers to the fire stations for the planned mass drive scheduled for Memorial Day. The containers will be collected next Tuesday and returned to EOTF for later distribution to support the latest emergency regulation. On state and federal activity, I'll try and pare this down as much as possible. There has been a lot. The legislature concluded its regular session at midnight on Sunday, and disappointingly, many critical issues important to the city remain unresolved. Both House Speaker Hortman and Senate Majority Leader Gazelka acknowledged a special session is almost certain. Only the governor has the authority to call a special session, but the peacetime emergency declaration, which is set to expire on June 12th, the executive and legislative branches need to come together to address the emergency and other unfinished businesses, business. So we anticipate that that date will be set, will, will be the start of this special session, being June 12th. COVID fund, COVID relief fund and local governments have decisions on how to distribute the available $667 million in aid from the state to local governments. And this is in the form of the CARES Act. So this is money for COVID-19 relief, was not made before the session concluded. I said that really poorly. The money distributed from the feds to the state, the $667 million, was not distributed by the states to cities before the session concluded. There have been a few formula proposals presented by both the Senate and the House, but negotiations continue as lawmakers weigh how to distribute funds across the state while taking into consideration areas that are more impacted by COVID than others. The Minneapolis delegation have been working closely with IGR staff to advocate for the city's interests and needs. I mentioned last week that I've been in conversation with Commissioner Bowerly from the Minnesota Department of Revenue, Speaker Hortman, along with our delegation. We are hopeful that we will receive funding soon. Neither the House or Senate bonding bills made it off the floor. The House GOP could not support the size of the House proposal, claiming it was too large, and the Senate DFL could not support the size of the proposal as well, claiming it was too small. The governor, Senate Majority Leader Gazelka, and Speaker Hortman have all said that a bonding bill is top priority for the special session, and negotiations between the two bodies are underway regarding workers' compensation. Workers' comp claims are mounting, given the possibility of contraction on the job. Workers' comp bills were moving through both bodies during the final days of session, including a bill with the recommendation of the Workers' Comp Advisory Council. Unfortunately, a final decision was not made as there is disagreement around the interpretation of the guidance from the United States Treasury around the use of CARES Act funding for workers' Federal Heroes Act. As I mentioned last Friday, the House of Representatives proposed a $3 trillion relief package called the Heroes Act. The House passed the act on May 15th, and it now awaits the Senate's response and negotiation. We continue to work with our federal delegation and national organizations to advocate for the need for direct aid to cities outlined in that act. Homelessness, the conversation around our unsheltered neighbors and homeless, homelessness remains a priority. We continue to monitor opportunities for the city to support our partners, and we're happy to see earlier this week that the Hennepin County Board authorized the acquisition of hotel property as protective housing for people experiencing homelessness or county-dependent individuals with underlying health issues. This is a big move, and this is the type of activity we'll need to engage in over the difficult budget times that are coming. This is an area where I am committed to leveraging the city expertise and limited funding with our partners to make, to make progress. You know, I want to save some time and not focus too much on the gap funding package. I'll skip by most of it, but what I will say is that, is that the applicants have been sent information by email or mail outlining the next step in the process, including a timeline update. There, I think there have been approximately 450 of the first 1,000 applicants for Emergency Housing Assistance Program have been referred to the community prevention partners. And the first 500 applicants to Stable Homes, Stable Schools... And the first 500 applicants to Stable Homes, Stable Schools have been referred to MPHA to complete the process. For the forgivable loan program, it'll be the next slide, I believe, or the final batch of loans are being issued this week and we anticipate releasing complete data via dashboard next week. Our Minneapolis employment and training team has reported higher participation in workforce training by youth and adults. Our team has offered more than 13 virtual job fairs, even the states for career seekers. They, there are currently approximately 51,000 open positions in our market and we are actively working with employers who are hiring. Finally, rebuilding and recovering. Through our safe opening and phased rebuilding initiative, Minneapolis Forward, we are working across the enterprise to move through and emerge from this pandemic as a stronger, more equitable, inclusive, resilient and innovative city. This includes the overarching theme for our recovery work, a tool that will help connect residents to resources and our strategies. Rebuilding the economy is going to be a central component of Minneapolis Forward and how we are responding to, responding to Governor Walz's Stay Safe Executive Order, allowing restaurants, bars, salons and barber shops to begin safely opening for business on June 1st. As we know, there have been additional restrictions that have been made to that since. We are working on creative solutions to keep our workers and customers safe, including unique spacing opportunities. And we'll have guidance for businesses, hopefully, that should be available early next week. And I know many of you and council staff have been working to shape and guide this process and I'm very grateful for your work and gratefully for your support and partnership. Thank you all. Thank you for the partnership. Thank you for the time. I appreciate the intensity of the situation. I know you all are feeling it as I'm feeling it as well. And I know we're all going to get through this together. Happy to answer any questions, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll see if there's any questions from councilmembers. While I wait, I will just underscore and thank our IGR staff and others, your office, for all the work that's happening with the legislative session this year. I've been a little concerned by some of the press, press coverage of the legislative discussions around the CARES Act funds, which seem to indicate that Hennepin and Ramsey County and the local governments within them are asking for more funds when the bill that was proposed initially to distribute CARES Act funds would actually give Hennepin and Ramsey County residents less than half per capita than the rest of the state. So certainly, some local governments, including, I would say, Minneapolis, Bloomington, others in Hennepin County, but other, also tourist destinations and other places around the state have more economic impact. Some locations have more need related to COVID. But the bill itself, as proposed, did not even use a fair distribution of funds based on a per capita calculation. So I know our staff have been working really hard to correct that misinformation and to get the correct information out there. And appreciate all their efforts, as well as our legislative delegation that is working really hard to get a fair distribution of that CARES Act dollars in a timely way. You know, we saw the mayor of Duluth has been commenting widely that there is an urgency to all of us in local government, not just here in Minneapolis, around the state, to get those dollars where they need to be in the community. So thanks again to all of the folks in our delegation and our own staff and those, you know, of us who've been working to, to get that resolved. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add? I don't see any, anything further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all.
Great, thanks, thank you. So with that, I will direct the clerk to file that report without, unless there are any objections. I don't see any, so we will move on to the reports of our standing committees. Mr. Clerk.
I'm so sorry to interrupt again, but this would be the time to take up the new business number two amendment, which is the amended resolution dealing with the local public health emergency. Just as way of explanation, all we're doing here is amending that resolution in order to add the most recently oral emergency regulation, which was issued yesterday, Emergency Regulation 2020-12. And that has been incorporated and shown in the underlying text on the resolution.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Clerk for the reminder. So that will bring us to that new item, new business item number two, as described by the clerk. Is there a motion on that item?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul Masano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Connaught. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Connaught.
Aye, I'm sorry, I'm having issues with the star six stuff. Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. And Madam President, I will apologize to you and the entire council. Once again, this item was added very late. It will be part of the amended agenda that's posted after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And we did get a chance to hear it as part of the presentation from the mayor as well, for the benefit of the public, to have that full information. So appreciate you bringing this forward today as that regulation was issued yesterday. Thank you. Now that brings us to the reports from our standing committees, beginning with the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee. And that report will be presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, everyone. The Business Inspections and Zoning Committee is bringing forward six items for approval this morning. Items one, two and three all have to do with denying an appeal with regard to demolition of a historic resource at a number of addresses, 406 11th Street Southeast, 410 11th Street Southeast, as well as 1103 4th Avenue Southeast. The committee voted unanimously to deny the appeal. Item number four are the liquor license approvals for May. Item five is a historic landmark designation of the Joyce Memorial Methodist Church. And item number six are program changes to the Great Streets Program, which is updating the categories for Great Streets eligible areas, adopting the program guidelines for business support grants, as well as extending some of the support grant contracts with the Northeast Chamber, the West Broadway Business Association and Seward redesign so that they can redirect their unspent funds to assist small business and artists during the COVID pandemic. With that, I'm happy to move all items one through six for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul Masano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Connaught.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. Next, we have the reports from our Policy and Government Oversight Committee, given by the Council Vice President, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee brings forward 19 items today. Items number one, two, three and four authorize the sale of certain city-owned properties subject to conditions and those parcel IDs and descriptions are all reflected in the meeting agenda. Items numbers five and six approve legal settlements and authorize a city attorney to execute documents necessary to effectuate those settlements. Item number seven is the passage of a resolution to authorize submission of grant applications for the livable communities demonstration account and livable communities demonstration account transit-oriented development for 2020 grants from the Metropolitan Council. Item number eight approves the assignment of the redevelopment contract with Longfellow Station Commercial to 3801 Hayawata and approving redevelopment contract amendments to reflect new project terms. Item number nine authorizes a grant application to the Women's Foundation of Minnesota for its COVID-19 Women and Girls Response Fund to provide direct local assistance to those most impacted by and/or most vulnerable to the disease. This is an application submitted by the Race and Equity Division for up to $10,000 in grant funds to be used locally. Item number 10 is the acceptance of grant funds from the Minneapolis Foundation to support work by the city's 2020 Census Complete Count Committee in conducting outreach for historically undercounted communities in North Minneapolis and passage of a resolution to appropriate those funds. Item number 11 authorizes a zero-cost multi-year contract with wireless information network for carrier-neutral cellular distributed antenna system for the city's public service building project. Item number 12 authorizes contract amendments for the 2020 housing opportunities for persons living with AIDS funding. Item number 13 accepts up to $100,000 in grant funds from Hennepin County for the Safe Routes to Schools Program for the president's Bicycle Boulevard Project and passage of a resolution to appropriate those funds. Item number 14 authorizes the 2019 year-end budget procedures for our special services, special service districts, as indicated on the agenda. Item, items number 15 and 16 both authorize contract changes related to the revised signal system storm sewer and pedestrian curb ramp improvements project, with those details provided on the meeting agenda for reference. Item number 17 gives project layout approval and authorizes negotiation to acquire easements and additional right of way from private, from private property owners for the Queen Avenue North Bicycle Boulevard Project located between Second Avenue North and 44th Avenue North. Item number 18 is the acceptance of the low bid from Minger Construction Companies for the Hennepin Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement Phase Two Project, all in accordance with city specifications. And item number 19 is the passage of a resolution adjusting the council's temporary restructuring to transition back to a two-week cycle of regular meetings, reactivating the Budget Committee and adopting a series of associated staff directions to the city clerk to implement these changes. Madam President, I move approval of all these items.
Council Vice President Jenkins has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul Masano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Connaught.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
No on item number seven, aye on the remaining items.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes on the report, except for number seven, which has 11 ayes and one neg.
That, that carries and that report is adopted. That brings us to the order of resolutions and we have two honorary resolutions today. The first is the 2020 Pride Month Honorary Resolution. And the second is the Minneapolis Asian Pacific Employees Honorary Resolution, which is establishing a new employee resource group. And so I'm going to turn it over to Councilmembers Cunningham and Ellison, who were the main authors of the second resolution, to read aloud so that we can all hear more about this new employee resource group, which are really important ways of support for our city employees. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I am so honored to bring this forward with Councilmember Ellison to not only recognize Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, but to also raise and praise and celebrate the creation of an employee resource group. As you said, they are critical resources for our employees. And so I'm grateful to be able to bring this forward and celebrate this with them. We do have a resolution that I will go ahead and start, kick it off, and then I will pass it over to Councilmember Ellison to finish it off. So let's go ahead and pull it up here. Honoring Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and the creation of the Minneapolis Asian Pacific Employee Resource Group. Whereas 32,000 Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders account for 7% of the city of Minneapolis population and make up 5% of the city's workforce. And the Asian Minnesotan population represents over 30 ethnicities, including but not limited to Afghan, Asian Indian, Bangladeshi, Bhutanese, Cambodian, Cantonese, Chinese, Filipino, Guamanian, Mong, Japanese, Korean, Karenie, Khmer, Kamu, Korean, Laotian, Malaysian, Mon, Native Hawaiian, Nepalese, Okinawan, Pacific Islander, Pakistani, Sri Lankan, Taiwanese, Thai, Tibetan and Vietnamese. And the diverse Asian and Pacific American community includes political refugees from war-torn countries, asylum seekers, choice immigrants, undocumented immigrants, adoptees, green card holders, new citizens and multi-generational American-born citizens. And the Asian Pacific American community has the greatest disparities in wealth, education attainment and homeownership within a race category. And Asian and Pacific American employees organized the Minneapolis Asian Pacific Employees Group to explore the diversity among Asian Pacific employees and to find similarity, community in their similarities and to find strength in their differences. And employee, employee resource groups offer city staff the opportunity to collaborate with colleagues and city leaders to help achieve the city of Minneapolis's racial equity hiring goals and improve the workplace by promoting policies, practices that are free of racial discrimination and to improve the mission of the city of Minneapolis to serve all residents in the city. And I will now pass it over to Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. I'll pick up where you left off here. And whereas since January 2020, there has been a dramatic increase in reports of hate crimes and incidents against those of Asian descent in response to the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas the Minneapolis Asian Pacific Employee Group has been established to support Asian Pacific employees in the city of Minneapolis, connect employees to city resources and help create a respectful workplace free of racial discrimination. And whereas the United States Congress passed Public Law 102450 in 1992, which annually designates May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, commemorating the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869, where the majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby commemorate May 22, 2020 as the inaugural launch of the Minneapolis Asian Pacific Employee Group and recognize the value and rich contributions of Asian Pacific American employees and residents to the city of Minneapolis. That we recognize the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. That we denounce racist scapegoating, xenophobia and acts motivated by hatred targeting Asian and Pacific Americans in all forms, especially in connection to the coronavirus pandemic. That we commit to recognizing, elevating and addressing the importance of the Asian and Pacific American community's diversity, unique challenges and vital role in the growth and strength of our nation, region and Minneapolis. And we celebrate the creation of the Minneapolis Asian Pacific Employees Group as a way to honor this commitment. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. I also just would like to add that this was important for Councilmember Ellison and I to bring forward because North Minneapolis has the largest concentration of Asian Pacific American folks, particularly Southeast Asian, and so I am very grateful to be able to be a representative of such a powerful, amazing community, and we are lucky to call them our neighbors here in North Minneapolis and stand alongside them during these challenging times. We do have, I do believe, a couple of folks who are on the line, who are going to be taking leadership with this new employee resource group. So I will pass it over to... Should I pass it over to the clerk to introduce?
Councilmember Ellison, I apologize. I am happy to help introduce two of our employees who are part of this group, as you just mentioned. Karuna Mahajan is with us, as is Maria Lee. I believe that Ms. Mahajan will start the presentation.
Good morning, Councilmember, Council President, Council Vice President, Council Members, and Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, thank you. This is a historic day for the Southeast Asian workforce and community members. The resolution that you just shared and read out means a lot. It is my honor to be here to thank you all for your support, your leadership, and your commitment. These are unprecedented times, and we are all feeling that, but your leadership is much appreciated as we guide through these difficult times together. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say a special thank you to you and the police chief when you sent out the message earlier to the community that you are here to support and would not accept any hate and have positive environment for everybody who's in the city and in the community. So I really appreciate everyone's commitment from this group to continue to provide a respectful workforce that's free of racial discrimination, and there are opportunities for, both for the workforce and the community, to connect with the city resources. I would also like to thank Ms. Patience Ferguson, Ms. Velma Corbell, and other ERGs in the city who have been instrumental with their support in the formation of this group. The city leadership has paved the way for this community and this resource group to come up, be visible, and seek the visible support from you all. So there has been much appreciation for that. Also, I would like to thank a lot of staff who has worked behind the scenes for the creation of this ERG group. I think it takes a whole village to get things done, so I just want to say thank you to those team members and our partnership with the communications and other ERGs that we stand here and with all your support to move forward. So again, I'll be short. Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you so much for being here. Would anyone else like to speak to this resolution, which is the item number two? I don't see any. Thank you both, Ms. Lee and Ms. Mahajan, for being with us today and for your work in helping lead and establish this new employee resource group. We look forward to supporting it blossoming into the future. I do see Councilwoman Johnson in queue to speak to item one. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just didn't want this item to pass without saying anything about it, but so many of us look forward to Pride every single year, and obviously, with everything going on with the pandemic, the celebrations won't be quite the same, but there will be celebrations going on, and I think this is an item I want to comment to because it's something I look forward to reading with you all every year. Normally, we split up the lines on it, but I will be missing that this year, but I want to wish everyone a happy Pride and look forward to participating in the modified events this year and hopefully a full return next year.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Appreciate you highlighting that, and I know you speak for all of us in pausing and recognizing the importance of recognizing Pride Month and also looking forward to getting back out and celebrating together in the streets. Thank you all. Any further comments on either of the resolutions? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul Masano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those resolutions are adopted. Thank you all. So finally, we have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements from council members this morning? I don't see any. So with that, we have concluded all of our items from today's agenda. We do have the Award Work Week coming up next week, so I hope folks will get a little time to either get caught up on work items, which have, I'm sure, piled up as we have this more rapid council schedule cycle, and also take some time for rest and caring for yourselves and others. I know that this is a really stressful time for so many, and so both of those things are important. So thank you all so much, and seeing no business to come before us, and without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.